All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to open and welcome you to the 4:00 PM work session for Lynchburg City Council for today. And welcome. I'm excited about today's meeting. I was talking to the city manager, and we believe historically it's the first meeting in our recent history, at least 20 years, that we've had a joint meeting with our Housing Authority and City Council. So, thank you for being here. Thank you, Housing Authority members, and I sit on there with you, but thank you for the service and the work that you're doing. And we appreciate your time spent here, so I look forward to getting started. And I'm going to turn to the Chair of the Housing Authority, which is Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hey, good afternoon to everybody. And I think the mayor's exactly correct. It probably has been 20 years, and the last time the Housing Authority met jointly with City Council, they were probably the same people. That was back when the Housing Authority was the members of the City Council. And then years ago, that changed somewhat, and we appointed, I guess, members and then retained two seats on City Council, four City Council members on the Housing Authority. The purpose today is really to review what the city's plan is, to get feedback and input from the Housing Authority members. I want to encourage the Housing Authority members to speak up and share your thoughts with us. City Council, I would like to, I guess, at the risk of putting words in people's mouths on City Council, we're not housing experts necessarily. The Housing Authority Board has spent more time looking at housing and housing initiatives in the city than probably the majority of City Council members have. Now, I know city staff has spent a significant amount of time on it, certainly Dawn is quite, is the professional in the area. But, so, please, speak your mind, and I'm hoping that Mrs. Spencer will be joining us shortly. It sounded like she'd be here when we talked to her this morning. But what I'd like to do, if it's all right, is for those members of the Housing Authority, if you would just kind of introduce yourself really, really briefly, and we'll just go around the circle, and I guess the two of us will pass, but just so the City Council can know who you all are. And we'll start with Mr. Fernandez.
I'm John Fernandez. I've been around a long time here in Lynchburg. I'm an activist. I've been involved in lots of things. I'm glad to be here.
Thank you.
I'm H. Carey. I was appointed to the Housing Authority by Mayor Joan Foster in 2010, and I've been trying to live up to her expectations ever since.
I'm Sarah Flock. I just started my second term in the Housing Authority, appointed by Turner himself. I'm still learning. There's a lot to learn, and I'm glad to be here.
And I'm Dawn Fagan, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And also, I just want to recognize our guests who are in the room with us, so thank you all for being here. I know it's a number of organizations represented, and thank you for taking the time to join us today. And I will now turn to our city manager, Ms. Vercek, who will start us off.
Thank you. We missed Mr. Keller.
Mr. Keller, sorry.
Hey, I'm Herschel Keller. I'm outside legal counsel to the Authority. I've done so for maybe 20 years.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, Chair of the Housing Authority Council, members of the Housing Authority. We are here today to follow up on a conversation that we had with City Council on July 9th regarding affordable housing and the findings of research that was done by the city's Livable Lynchburg Collaborative and the Housing Collaborative. And following that meeting, Council thought it would be appropriate to have a joint meeting with the Housing Authority to talk about different housing programs within the city so that the Housing Authority is aware of those programs, and for Council to become more aware of programs aimed at affordable housing that are sponsored by or administered by the Housing Authority. So, we want to have that conversation today, and we are hoping by the end of the day or the end of the work session that we will have a vision statement that staff can then go back and craft some implementation, some operationalizing, to create affordable housing in the city of Lynchburg. This is a big issue that is facing communities throughout the country. I mean, you can hardly watch television. There was a brief on 60 Minutes this past week about affordable housing in the city of Detroit. Some of the major tech companies are dipping their toes into investing in affordable housing. So, we are right there with others nationwide in trying to come up with an answer and a policy and something that we can do to add affordable housing to our housing stock. But before we do that, our, the city's Department of Communications and Marketing, LTV, the Housing Collaborative Partners, and the Housing Authority have put together a roughly five-to-six-minute video to give you a picture of the faces of people that are challenged with finding affordable housing. So, if you will indulge us for these five or six minutes, that would be great, and then we can get more into the conversation.
It was, it was a whole lot difficult because I couldn't do the things I wanted to do. I was like handicapped, which I still am in certain points. And then we didn't have enough money to help other people out. Food stamps wasn't enough. That's the first thing I was approved for. And then I wasn't, didn't reach the age to get the money to make ends meet with me. I met the secretary here, and she was the officer-manager contractor, and then she told me to choose my apartment. I said, "For real?" And went up and down the hallway, and no one was living on this floor right here, and I chose my apartment. So, I got a place. I started getting my stuff together and say, "Hey, I'm going home." I'm happy. I'm home. Thank you, Lord Jesus, I'm home.
Because of Rush Homes?
Yes. Rush Homes made me happy, and I'm happy.
And it said, "Contact Lynn Cag if you want to become a homeowner." So, I went up to my desk, called Lynn Cag, got in that class, and here I am. There's help out there if you're willing to do the work. You know, anything worth having is worth working for, and that's what I did. I worked, like I said, I was devoted to myself. I was strict. I couldn't spend, you know, and I just had to do this. I was like, "One day," Ms. Cruz kept telling me, "one day whoever wants a home is going to get a home." I feel like a different person because, I mean, you know, hadn't been for this program, I'd be still renting. I'd be renting, you know, all my life and not accomplishing anything and not having nothing to look forward to. But to come home every day from a hard days of work and just turn the key and come into your home where you can just relax, you know, and you're in a good neighborhood, good atmosphere, it feels like home.
One landlord actually said, "I don't let those people rent from me." Fortunately, Rush Homes was there to help with the social services for that housing department. If it weren't for that, I'm really not sure where I'd be living. I had the help of social services, which certainly I appreciate, but living on disability, you know, makes it very difficult. People look at me and don't realize I'm on disability, or the challenges I face. Housing was huge. It was a huge problem. But since the brain surgery, it's been a real challenge, and I'm doing really well. But it's not, I don't know when I'm going to lose my balance. It's a guessing game. But I studied, I spent my life's work as a social worker, and it's hard to switch that off and go to the other end of the spectrum. But Rush Homes has really made a difference, and I would love to see it accessible to more people. And money is an issue. It all comes down to money, unfortunately. But they have been wonderful, very helpful.
The Housing Choice Voucher Program is administered by the Lynchburg Housing Authority. It opens every few years. When it opens, you fill out an application packet and wait to hear back. After receiving the voucher, I have gone out into the community. I've looked for housing. I finally, I've found housing. But I think something that's important to note is that there are limitations with utilizing your voucher. The main two limitations are the lack of suitable housing. A lot of times, the properties that have set themselves up to utilize the vouchers are not always the best-conditioned properties. And the second thing is really the stigma to renting to Section 8 renters, you know. Not all Section 8 renters are, you know, unemployed people of questionable character, you know. "I have a good job, you know, I have a decent credit score. I'm just looking to improve my family circumstances." My goal with myself and my family is to move forward. Even if I take two steps forward and take one step back, I've still taken one step forward. So, the voucher program allows me to choose housing that I might not, in my current circumstances, might be able to afford. It feels great to have found this new home, actually, because I was into the extension period of my voucher, and had I not found this place, I would have had to settle for someplace I didn't want, or I would have lost my voucher and had to start the whole process over again.
So, we wanted to put a human face to this conversation and discussion, and I hope that, I feel like we really, we did that. We're going to move on to presentations, brief presentations by Dawn, Kent White, our Director of Community Development, to talk about the roles, responsibilities, and programs that each entity administers. So, Dawn, then Kent, then Dawn and Kent.
Let's start here. So, what a lot of people don't know is LRHA is a political subdivision of the state of Virginia. We are not a federal agency. We are not a state agency. We are not a city agency. We're kind of out there floundering by ourselves. We're funded by the programs that we administer. So, one of the things we wanted to share with you was our mission, and our mission is dedicated to the improvement of the quality of life for all Lynchburg citizens by being a leader in the community development, revitalizing neighborhoods, and facilitating economic growth and development. This is achieved by seeking and entering into partnerships with organizations and clients to achieve safe, decent, and affordable housing with an emphasis on homeownership maintained in a manner that fosters pride and dignity. So, we wanted to go over, just so you know, some of the programs that we administer. So, our first is public housing. Public housing, we own 328 units. The Housing Authority actually owns them and manages them. So, we do all the work related to, that a normal private landlord does. We have 328 units. We receive about $1.3 million in operating subsidy from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Our first apartment complex is Darrington Apartments. It's 100 units, was built in 1960 or thereabouts. Provided the bedroom breakdown, we have 12 one-bedrooms, 52 two-bedrooms. And I just, I just wanted to give you an idea of where we're located. Our property is located at Chambers Street, Lavell Street, the Pulaski Street, kind of down there, it's, you can get in, but you can't get out. So, and here's just-
For the members of Council, so if you're at the Darrington Center, Learning Center, we've been down there before, the Community Center. If you look up on the hill on the right, above the old landfill, that's the, that's the Darrington housing. Thank you.
We just wanted to provide a couple snapshots to give you an idea. They're very sturdy buildings, but they are a little dated. Our next, whoops, our next complex is Birchwood Apartments. There's 103 units in Birchwood. They were built in 1976. That's our one complex that we have five-bedroom units, and that's located on Hillside Court, right off from Hill Street. And again, they look like '70s units. Our next property is Langview Apartments, 50 units, built in 1983. It's 2229 Yorktown Avenue. So, for me, it's like right off of, it's right behind Langhorne Road.
At the old road, you turn right at the new traffic circle.
Thank you. Thank you. I can get there. I just can't tell you how to get there. And again, here's a couple, you can see we're kind of coming into the 20th century with our building model here. Langview was built at the same time that Brookside Apartments was built. Brookside is at 89 Beltaire, behind the Walmart. I can get you there, but I can't tell you how to get there. It's over off of Old Forest Road. We have 75 units there. They were built the same time as the Langview was built, and they look basically the same as Langview. We've gone through and done some updating to the, to the porches for those. These are little dated pictures. Some of the other programs that we administer, the Housing Choice Voucher Program, you heard one of our participants talk about obtaining a voucher. We have budget authority for 979 vouchers, however, we only get $3.9 million approximately each year to provide rental assistance. And that's really all it is. It's rental assistance. We're not the landlord. We have a contract with the landlord to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing to allow us to do inspections annually. And then we have the voucher, which is the contract with us and the participant, for them to do their obligations to the program. Basically, what we are trying to assure is that participants pay 30% of their monthly adjusted income, but no more than 40%. HUD does let us go up to 40%, but no more. We also administer the Permanent Supportive Housing Program, Housing First Lynchburg. We have about a $225,000 annual budget authority from the HUD Continuum of Care Grant. Again, that's also rental assistance, but it's for chronically homeless disabled persons. Also pays portion of the rent to assure participants only pay 30%, but no more than 40%. And that is rent and utilities in that calculation. Last year, we started, we agreed to administer a state rental assistance program, and again, it's rental assistance, but it's specifically targeted, it's through the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and it is specifically for persons with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We are also the, for the last four years, I think, have been the front door to the homeless response system. We host the Coordinated Homeless Intake and Access. We call it CHIA. Of course, everything in our world is acronyms. My board will be happy to share those with you and tell you all about them. We are funded, that position is funded with CDBG funds through the city, and it allows us to have one full-time person to coordinate all the initial access to the homeless response system. In a nutshell, folks call the CHIA coordinator if they're going to be homeless. Tonight, they call her to see if they can find, she has a place for them to stay, one of our shelters. If not, she also tries to help them divert, can they stay on somebody's sofa? Can they stay with their mom, a friend, that type of thing? Or can we get them into prevention services that is administered by Lynn Cag? We also do work with the city with, through the CDBG program. We currently have a rental rehab program, and that encourages owners of substandard properties to make improvements to their rental properties. We will pay up to 50% of the cost, of the total cost of the improvements. Last year, the year before, we went to two tiers. Originally, it was one tier. You got up to $5,000. But in order to encourage some of the more substantial rehab, we decided to go with two tiers. You can go up to $10,000, and we'll pay 5,000 of that. It requires renting to a low-income family for one year. Improvements over $10,000 will receive 50% of the expense and will require renting to a low-income family for three years. So, by increasing the amount of money that we could assist a landlord with, we also increased the amount of time that we're asking them to keep that unit affordable. We do monitor those units annually to make sure that they are kept affordable, that they're, you know, that the families are, meet the criteria outlined by HUD. If the unit meets the requirement, then the funds are not required to be repaid, and if it doesn't, if they move out and somebody else over income moves in, then the funds have to be repaid. I think this is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks, Dawn.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kent White. I work with the Department of Community Development. I'm one of the people who's fortunate enough to administer some really important grant programs for our community. You've heard, referred to as CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs. Melville Walker, who's in the audience, administers those and works with a number of housing providers in the area. Rush Homes, Lynchburg Community Action Group, Miriam's House, Habitat Humanity, and of course, the Housing Authority, to make sure that we are providing housing assistance directly to those folks who need it most. In the last five years, you see on the slide, we've administered over 200, $2.5 million in grants that have gone directly into housing investment in the city. At the same time, we've also been collectively, as an organization and in collaboration with the Housing Collaborative, looking at the housing issues in our community. And this started as far back as 2011, when we had a Lynchburg is Listening conversation on housing with the community. And a lot of the things that we heard was a more organized approach. How do we get our partners and the city working together and targeting the issues that are most important? Out of that, City Council endorsed the formation of that Housing Collaborative in 2012, and a few initiative, a few subsequent initiatives have followed suit. Things like clustering of zoning, which may seem like a small thing. It did not change density, but the new ordinance that Council adopted, I still say new, but the ordinance Council adopted in 2016, allowed for clustering of residents, which ultimately provides for reduction in infrastructure costs to public and private housing developers. We've also seen things like an analysis of impediments to housing, a study that was completed in 2015, that really said, "Hey, you need to spread out the assistance that you're providing throughout the city, because what we know is the historic areas that you see denoted in green, they are our oldest areas of the city." While that's been our primary grant support area, we know that assistance and support services exist throughout the city, and we want to make sure that we're seeing those housing opportunities throughout. We work closely with the city assessor on real estate tax incentives that allow for upfits of existing, and City Council just last year adopted a program that allows infill housing in neighborhoods. What this does is it creates a 10-year tax deferment, pre-build versus post-build, on vacant lots. Unfortunately, it's only available in certain neighborhoods. That's a state code restriction. But what it does allow is for us to reutilize these vacant lots, and the individual who's developing it gets that, that tax deferment for that period. This is done in conjunction with real estate rehabilitation, which is a citywide program that allows for real investment in existing housing, upfitting, if you will. Same period that we're talking about, 10 years, multifamily is eight years, and it's all about abating that net increase in value for that period of time. To us, what we see in this is improving the quality of real estate without increasing tax burden, which ultimately keeps those homes affordable. About 40% of the real estate rehabilitation credits and the infill credits have been used in areas, in neighborhoods with an assessed value of $150,000 or less. So, we think there's some tremendous opportunity here, again, both for that infill investment and for that outfit, both improving the overall neighborhood value and creating great opportunities throughout. So, that's a program that we hope will be better utilized going forward. The city does a consolidated plan every five years, and the goal of that plan is to guide the disbursement of those federal grants that I was talking about. There are housing goals that Council adopts every year around those funds, things like increasing the number of owner-occupied units, rehabilitating substandard housing, initiatives to increase permanent affordable rental and homeownership opportunities, and promoting programs that assist eligible individuals in retaining their homes. And that's why we're so excited about that you're having this conversation today, because next year, we're going to ask Council to adopt new goals, for the, new housing goals for the next five years, and we think this conversation will serve as a good foundation for that effort. We also, so we're going to pivot a little bit, and Dawn and I are just going to give you a couple of examples of existing partnerships. You've heard references to a number of the housing providers that are part of this collaborative. So, we kind of want to put some projects in front of you just as examples. So, the first is a partnership between the city and Lynchburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority. City Council adopted a vacant building registration program in 2016. They actually reauthorized it. And that program requires owners of vacant structures to register. It was really a response from the outset- It was really a response from the outset on complaints we received from neighbors. It created a lot of staff workload, blighted structures that were just decaying in place, a real concern from the community. And we all heard that loud and clear. But we've seen some modest benefits of this. The first is about 2% of existing owners have repaired or are currently repairing their properties as a result. 40% of those that were registered as vacant or been monitored have been, have changed ownership in the last year. And we've seen a lot of those new owners putting investment into upfitting and making those structures suitable for habitation again. And then you see the 2018 and 2019, and again, we're really early, so I don't want to sell this too much, but we are seeing a decline in the number of vacant structures built, which starts to show you that people are investing in these properties and we are changing it. So that was a code change that on its face, Council did for that reason, but we saw it as a great opportunity to partner with the Housing Authority on another program, so I'm going to bring Dawn back up to share a little bit of that with you. Dawn?
And that is known as the former, formerly known as the Spot Blight Program. I've heard several folks talk about the, what's happened to the Spot Blight Program. When I came to the Housing Authority about six and a half years ago, we had over 35 properties on our books that nobody was doing anything. We had acquired them, but there was no plan to do anything with them. And so throughout those first couple of years, we put for sale signs on them. We identified a few of them for us to actually build on. We built three homeownership homes over the last couple of years on a couple of those sites. We're getting ready to build another rental home on Polk Street. And so we've really kind of thought about this, how would we like to rebrand it? We're trying to call it the Vacant Housing Revitalization and Rehabilitation, but I know old habits die hard, so everybody still likes to call it Spot Blight. I wanted it to have a little more of a positive connotation, and that's why we came up with the VER. Just, just to rebrand it for a positive spin. And the idea is, we would work with the city staff to identify the registered vacant and/or condemned properties, to determine potential properties for us to acquire. I've got the clicker. Then using a best-of-the-worst and worst-of-the-worst approach, we could determine two things. What units could have a short turnaround time that can be easily rehabilitated and get back on that market, that affordable housing market? And what ones needed a lot more work, or those that couldn't be rehabbed? A longer turnaround time for units that need to be demolished and newly constructed? So that's kind of the new approach. This is one of the projects that we, we had acquired Federal Street before I got here, and we partnered with Habitat. Donna and her group built this house for us. It was, it was amazing. The home sold to a disabled gentleman who had been living in very unsafe and sanitary living conditions. We were told that it was basically falling down around him.
Ms. Vega, if I can interrupt. This house was on Federal, on Federal Street, 70?
Seventy Federal.
Seventy Federals, a white house with a green roof. It was a very large house. The chimney was falling over. It was right next to a school bus stop. The kids were waiting for the school bus stop on the porch of this vacant house, and the whole back was all just grown up completely. And basically, the Housing Authority purchased it through this program, but couldn't find anybody that could invest that amount of money into the house to bring it up to code and to, because it was such a large house, which is one of the problems we're finding. The solution was, for safety's sake, we demoed it, and now, using the homeownership program, we've got somebody living in that house right there. And it's worked out great. It took a dangerous situation and created a new, safe, modern home out of it.
We also, in conjunction with our Housing Choice Voucher Program, we provide some of the project-based vouchers, seven project-based vouchers for the Old Forest Village that Rush Homes completed last November. We also have some regular HCV, the Housing Choice Vouchers, in there, and we have some permanent supportive housing folks in there as well. So Rush's complex at Old Forest Village is really serving three different populations of folks that need affordable housing. We are in the process of pursuing a new project to develop another 48 units that will serve families with disabilities, developmental disabilities, and families who are homeless with disabilities and exiting homelessness. Remaining 22 units will serve the general low-income population. Miriam's House, another partnership, will provide case management services for these families as required by some of the different funding streams that we're going to have to use to see this come to fruition. I think that's your slide.
That's me. Thanks.
Okay. So in wrapping up, we wanted to highlight a couple of opportunities that collectively our housing partners have been taking, taking advantage of. We know we still have a long ways to go, and this conversation's so important to that, but we are making strides. Some other opportunities that you've heard are, just recently, we've had two housing studies, one presented by the Housing Collaborative to City Council in January of this year, and then, as Ms. Silverchuk referenced, staff provided a best practices document to Council in July. And we know that this is a nationwide problem, where it's not going to be solved overnight. We didn't get here overnight, but local data is what will lead us to local solutions. We know that the, we see great things out there that other communities are doing. We might try to emulate some of those, but at the end of the day, understanding the problem we have, and again, this vision and focus that you give us, is so important to allow us to pull all these resources together and target real solutions. This other bullet is, because we wanted to, when we talk about opportunities, we want to talk about things that we're missing. And I used this example at City Council's retreat last week. We're still struggling with seeking out what we would call non-traditional assistance. So Councilman Perro brought an idea to staff several weeks ago, based on a conversation he had with a colleague at a conference, about how Brownfield's funding, funding that remediates pollution on sites, could be used to outfit housing, and was there a connection there? And sure enough, we've seen that there are some real examples of planning grants that can be used to potentially outfit that. So staff's looking into it. We know we're missing opportunities like that, which takes us to this important point of diverse experiences. We've got really incredible housing practitioners sitting in this room with a wealth of knowledge, marrying that with the non-traditional approaches, the folks who, the lending institutions, private housing developers, folks who see these same problems with different lenses will help us create real, workable solutions. And then we talked about sustained communication and outreach, because we, you've just seen it. We've got some programs on the books that we think are helpful, they're being underutilized, and just like that, matching that with the vision, with your collective vision for housing in the city, will help us focus that and define the vision for this community so that we can all rally around it. So with that, Dawn and I are available to answer any questions you have, before we turn it over to Deputy Manager Wodoka to talk about the next items.
I guess one, one long time ago, in 2004, on the CDBG, when we put one of those, that policies together that you referenced, and the number one goal was homeownership. And so, you know, when you think back a long time ago, during President Lincoln with the Homestead Act.
And, and you think about how that helped to make a country very livable and inhabited, and where people actually owned something, and they actually took ownership of it, and the country flourished with the Homestead Act. That has been a goal in here since 2004. Now, has there been anything that, that that goal has ever been addressed, or kind of some statistical measure that said, we've really tried to get more homeownership? Because when people own stuff, I mean, wow, that pride goes up. We saw the video that you had, the lady that owned the thing, so she owns the house. Have we done anything statistical, rather than, you know, an anecdotal picture of one person with the house? Because the stats that I saw, lots of it was about all these complexes that you're still renting out to people. Is there a way to sell those as a condo? You have units, you have 385 units in one place and 75 another. Can we sell them somehow, so we're not constantly just subsidizing rent, where we could actually let somebody own something? Has there been, first of all, I guess, has there been any, for this goal that's been there for 15 years?
Yeah, I think, I'll try to answer that. So of course, these goals are things that we track as we target our CDBG spending. So one of the things that Council does every year is it reviews and adopts an annual action plan, and in that, we address the accomplishments in a given year towards that goal. And we can certainly get you that specific data, but I can tell you, anecdotally, there are certainly programs that have been encouraging that for the last five, in the data that I reviewed.
I totally realize there are programs, but has it actually worked? Is my question.
Yes. And there were specific examples of the house on Federal Street that's now in homeownership.
Yeah, that's, again, that's one thing.
There were, there was another one.
Miss Vega, how many homeownership programs have we done? We just started this.
Fourteen wands were.
Excuse me?
Two fourteen wands were.
Is it about four of them?
It's about three.
Three. And Mr. Agelson, one of the things.
So again, I'm talking about since 2004.
Right.
So, so we got three, from 2004 to 2019, that's 15 years, so we're getting there, but...
I think in 2000, I don't know if it was 2004 timeframe, or, but we'll say close to that, there was a large homeownership program that the Housing Authority initiated. Hershey, you, you've been on the board for 20, or Council for 20 years. I don't know if you recall exactly, but there was a number of homeownership houses that were made available, that were financed through the Housing Authority using that program. But the program was kind of, it spent all its money initially, and then, you know, it's through a 20-year loan period, so there was no more funding really in that program to reinvest. Recently, we were able to reinvest some of that money. And then we've done these three new projects, three new houses that are homeownership houses. One of the problems we're having is that the people that we are targeting for the, to live in the houses, don't have the financial history to get the loan for the house, even at, even at a rate that is significantly reduced, a payment schedule that is significantly reduced by, by the HUD grant. So that's one of the challenges we're having. But you're right, we're working on homeownership.
Councilman Agelson, I think we can pull that data together. In short answer to your question, I think the data does exist. It may not be perfect, but I think it's in a number of places, under the Spotlight Program, where those houses were sold for a dollar, the homeownership program, LINCAEG operates a homeownership program. So there's a, there's a smattering of programs, and there is data for all of those, but I think it would be a project to pull that together and get that for you, which we can do.
Because what we want to do, before we do something different, we want to see, have we met the goal that we've had? Because we're now looking at some new goals and new vision statements, and so if we have goals that we're meeting, great, then we can meet some more goals. But if we're not meeting the goals that we laid out, maybe we ought to meet the goals that we're laying out.
We have the data, and it is reported annually to Council with the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report that we have to send to HUD every year. If you'd like to see just a consolidation of the homeownership piece, we're more than happy to get that to you.
And then also, coupling that with all of these, your apartments that you have, that you're renting out, all these units, is there any way to have those be?
That paper also talks about all the other programs that are administered, not just by the home program and the CDBG, but we allude to all of the other things that happen each year with the Housing Authority or with Rush, with Habitat outside of the federal funding. So yes, already have that information and can pull.
But on the Housing Authority side, I mean, on the Housing Authority side, you've got lots of apartments.
HUD is actually encouraging housing authorities to get out of the rental housing business. And by doing that, they're giving us several tools that we can use to do that. Yes, there is public housing.
Dawn, can you please, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt. Thank you. So that they're recording it.
Okay. Okay. There, there is an opportunity to do some public housing sales. We've started looking into all of those options for that. It's a new term called RAD, Rental Assistance Demonstration, and, and part of that is where HUD allows us to, they actually give us back our properties. Right now, there's a declaration of trust saying that HUD owns those four properties that we manage. And through this RAD conversion, we can convert some to homeownership, yes. We can continue to rent them, put Section 8 vouchers in them. There's, there's a, there's a whole toolbox that HUD has been rolling out. They started out with 60,000 units to convert to RAD about four years ago, and they've now increased it to like 455,000. So you have to apply, you have to have a plan, and that's, the board and I have started talking about those options and looking into those. We've got to figure out what fits for Lynchburg. We've got to figure out what does Lynchburg need.
Yeah, and thank you, Jim, for bringing up that point, because that's, that's why we're here, to bring attention to what the potentials are, or the potential is, for our programs, to talk about where we want to go. And we do have partners that are working on homeownership. As Mr. White said, Melva and I and other, some other staff attended the homeownership class graduation with LINCAEG. And so they had about 15 or so in that program that are becoming, half of them homeowners, half of them qualified, but they had a waiting list for the next class of, I think at that time, about 30 or 40 people who were interested, who had heard about it probably by word of mouth, for the potential for homeownership. And that's a year-long program. So I think your question is very valid, and the data's there, and so I appreciate that you brought it. But that's, that's a part of why we're here, is to begin to define how do we want to grow and what smart growth is, and how do we bring citizens and residents into that type of opportunity? But, as well as needing the affordable housing, because we do have some vulnerable populations in our city that may not become homeowners, but they need still stable, secure housing choices. And so we have to discuss that, too, our seniors, our persons with disabilities, some of which were there, our veterans. And so I think as a city, you know, if we're working to create a goal, then the staff and the partners can look toward helping us meet that goal in all the areas, even what you brought up.
I got a question from Mr. White. Mr., sorry, Mr. White.
White.
Could you go back one slide?
Sure.
On this, this is, this shows concentration of housing choice residents based upon, and suitability of neighborhoods. We're not, it's going to be a very tough challenge to try to put, or have those residents live in the most suitable neighborhoods. What can we do to make those neighborhoods more suitable? And what's, what's in that index, and what can we change to make this?
Yeah. And to be completely honest, I don't have that answer for you yet, other than to say, HUD, so this is 2008 data, and I think when Dr. Wodoka presented this in July, one of the things he said was that, you know, it's, we have no reason to believe that it's all that different than the study was in 2011. But what we know through HUD's Housing Index is access to these services, daycare, transportation, those key support services that go beyond housing are what makes a successful, makes this homeownership and this affordability successful for our community. So I think those are the things that we want to start looking into, and so just anecdotally, I'll tell you, one of the recommendations from the White Paper was looking at how these services break out across neighborhoods, and which ones have ready access, coupled with the programs that we have in place, to make those things happen. But that's just an example.
And what you said, could you mention a couple of those again? You said daycare and...
Sure. Childcare, recreation facilities, transportation, those are, those are a few.
Medical services.
Medical services, that's great.
Would be clear, not my right hand, the Bill of Maria, is that what you referred? Since we've built, whatever, you count that.
Did.
Be clear, can you, the suitability index, the higher the score, the better it is.
Correct. That's correct. And, and that's represented by the darker colors on the map. So, but again, I don't, I use it as an example, because it is a 2008 map, so I just... So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. Sure.
All right, thank you.
So, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Reed Wodoka. For those of you that don't know, I'm the deputy city manager here in Lynchburg. And part of that role, I had the distinct opportunity to have led the group that wrote the White Paper for housing policy, potential options for housing policy in Lynchburg. So city staff spent the better part of about four months earlier this year, spending time learning about leading practices in housing policy in cities and counties throughout the United States. As Mr. White mentioned, you know, there's, in this paper, there's all kinds of examples from big cities, small cities, counties, lots of different places that may or may not look like us. And so as we discovered, all the things that are going on throughout the United States, or a lot of the things that are going on throughout the United States, you know, we learned that there are successful programs in many cities that could potentially be tailored to Lynchburg. We are different than a lot of places. We are, every city is different. And any program that we might want to implement would have to certainly be tailored to us. So in that vein, the White Paper identified 10 leading practices for effective housing programs in cities. And throughout that document, we were able to identify a variety of successful measures that people have taken to tackle those issues. But the most important thing is to be sure that there is no silver bullet to address housing concerns in cities like ours and in other cities as well. However, but however, it takes a prolonged, dedicated concerted effort that is multi-pronged to ensure that housing affordability concerns are addressed appropriately within a community. And probably the most important thing is that there has to be a dedicated set of champions that are available and pushing for these issues to be addressed. So learning all of those things and learning about everything that's been done, or a lot of things that have been done throughout the United States, we came up with nine final recommendations specifically for Lynchburg, and you can read those in that document. But the reason we're here today is to talk about the first two recommendations from that document. And we really think that it's important to hit those really hard first. And I will say that those two recommendations are probably the hardest. So these are making sure that we understand what a clear and well-articulated vision for housing policy in our community are, housing policy issues in our community are, and how housing is impacted and impacts income concerns, the strength of families, and other community wealth building concerns that we might have. So that's sort of our first issue that we really would like to address today, is really getting down to a consistent coherent vision for what housing policy looks like in the city of Lynchburg in the long run. The next step and the next recommendation was, we want to make sure that the established housing collaborative that the Housing Authority and a lot of these other partners that have been mentioned today are a part of, we want to make sure that the right people are at the table to help us identify a path forward in our community. And so ultimately, what we think of is making sure that we are including all of those who need to be at the table, such as private lending institutions potentially, sort of market rate developers potentially, our anchor institutions, which are our universities, our healthcare system, et cetera, and making sure those folks are at the table. And we think we need to, we think that there are additional people that need to be at the table that can have a beneficial effect on ultimately what we do in housing. So what we'd like to do today is split this group up into a couple of smaller groups to evaluate a draft vision statement that the Housing Collaborative drafted earlier this year. Take a look at that statement and help us understand whether or not we're getting it right and whether you're hitting, we are hitting the goals that you would have for housing. And we'll pass these down as we go along. So we've drafted a number of prompts for discussion as you get into your groups that will help you sort of develop a conversation around these issues, as well as both the vision statement and the stakeholders. So you can see where you are assigned to the breakout groups. The first group there, you can stay here in this room. The second group, you can go to the Community Development Conference Room. And the third group, we'll have, there's another smaller conference room in Community Development and we'll be ready. Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a question before we do the breakout?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I think it's a terrific study you all put together. But on page 30, you have partnerships. And in that upper paragraph, you know, you talk about Miriam's House, Rush Homes, Habitat for Humanity, redevelopment housing, it's already Lincag. And then you talk about all of those organizations except one that follows, and that's Habitat. And my understanding is Habitat has made a significant contribution to affordable housing. And I'm just wondering how many houses, you know, since, how many houses have you all done?
300 and two.
Wow.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wow. And that's the only glaring omission that I see in this entire paper.
So it's interesting, Mr. White and I, looking back through this today, said, oh my gosh, we didn't write.
And you wouldn't know I'd be in the audience, would you?
So yeah, so it certainly wasn't intentional and certainly the Habitat for Humanity group is a huge, hugely important part.
I just wanted to be sure that they were recognized for their tremendous contribution.
So if there's not further questions for that, you should have, you should have those prompts and you can break into your groups. Again, the first group will stay here, second group will go across the hall, second two groups will go across the hall.
Across the hall square.
Right, Community Development.
Community Development office.
Right across the hall. So as I came around, I asked for each of you, each of the groups to identify a spokesperson. So if we could kind of start with our discussion of the vision statement. So we'll go around to each with the three spokespersons and identify some of our comments. My good friend, Mr. Hughes, Hughes is going to type for us and hopefully, hopefully we'll come up with something. It was either that or I was right on the board and nobody would know what it said. Yeah, he was correct for us. So who is our spokesperson for the mayor's group? The mayor?
No, it was Jeff, and so we'll chime in.
So on that, the draft vision, you know, very good lofty sounding. When you look at affordable, though, the problem is either suppressing the value of real estate, which is totally the opposite of what we need to do as a council. Our total job is to increase values of real estate. The other way to make it affordable is having incomes increase. And that's through economic gain and development and employment. So how you do that in practice, you know, we really need to try to figure out how we can raise incomes and have people back to work. That's number one.
Yep, and along-
Yeah, with that, I think we're going into number two. We talked about that we have vulnerable populations that may never increase their income or their resources. And so those senior populations, persons with disabilities, veterans. So do we kind of create a tier focus for the most vulnerable? And then for those folks who, it's a temporary situation and they will, you know, giving the additional income and training and increasing the median wages, will that help them move on onto passive homeownership or increasing their personal family gains? But kind of separating out that focus so that we are making sure we meet the need of the people whose incomes won't grow, they worked here, they lived here, their family's here, they're not moving out of town, but they still need the security of housing.
Sure. So maybe a couple, just an ideas.
One would be like more temporary and hopefully transitional. The other would be more long-term, that would be because they have some true needs.
So sort of a continuum of opportunities. So maybe to address the first one also, what Mr. Helgason said was, you know, maybe instead of thinking about affordable housing, maybe it's housing affordability, right? So thinking about that structure. Is that, Jeff, is that kind of-
Okay.
What else on the vision statement, Jeff?
I think, like in number four, we kind of talked about, well, we mentioned it, creating the intentionality of focusing on populations. And then the opportunity to draw down more, well, we kind of, this was a part of our discussion, draw down funding from other resources that we've not tapped into before, other programs, you know, new ones that are coming out and really learning what those are and what funds are available to help us affect the focus areas we want to affect. If it's the new development, but again, we talk about to develop new, our old properties into mixed income, mixed market, or, you know, improve them. Where are the families that are currently living there going to go? So we have to open up some room somewhere to be able to do some of these things.
So it sounds like we heard sort of two things there. So expanding opportunities where they exist, but doing sort of more innovative kind of things that are more modern, right? And I think there was, what was the first thing you said?
Well, just creating intentionality of focusing on the populations.
Okay, so maybe the other part of the vision statement has, needs to have something about ensuring, intentionally ensuring a broad audience that we're impacting. So making sure, being intentional about that.
So are you talking about each of these four questions or what you keep asking, what are you asking?
Yeah, he's going through each question.
Each of the four questions or just question number one of the draft?
No, so I think, I mean-
Oh, I've moved down to four.
We can go through each part of this, I don't think. Yeah, but if you have thoughts on it, we can talk, we can talk.
Yeah, I was just going out.
Those are just prompts.
Yeah, and so the reality of is, I think, I think if we look at things and we look over the last 55 years of the, you know, great society, we've never solved anything, everything's gotten worse. And so eventually, we got to say, what can we do differently? How can we do something differently that can give people back their dignity by buying the house rather than having to get some check from somebody that gives it to them that helps pay their rent each time? Recognizing, as Trenae said, that there's going to be some that, man, they have some very difficult things that we need to help others. How can we help to transition out of there as soon as possible?
So I think it's that continuum of service that changes over time for depending on your circumstances? And then maybe a focus on homeownership is what? And I think one thing I would suggest also is that you might think about not only just having homeownership, but you might want to be thinking about, well, you know, all of us who are homeowners or have owned a home know that homeownership can be really tough if you're not ready. We've all probably, you know, been trying to figure out how to fix something in the middle of the night. So that might be something that you might want to think about.
And so with that, with the homeownership or with the, all our housing policies, do we do things that are the actual, the opposite? I know you've had several of the things up there with the different apartment, the number of bedrooms. Well, if you have five bedrooms and they're unrelated, that's illegal in the city because of our new ordinances that you can't have more than three unrelated people. And so with that, are we doing things that are different? One of the other points was having tax abatement in certain areas to keep prices down. Well, that's, can be done throughout the entire city, is for us as a council to keep taxes down so we don't have to raise prices all across the city. It doesn't have to, if it works in a pocket area that was presented to us in the slides, by having it, to keeping houses affordable in one area, that can work across the entire city by having taxes low.
Okay, one note, I did, I thought about what you said about things have gotten worse. We have more public help and things have gotten worse. But I suspect if you look at minority and women, homeownership has probably gone up. Like, so you could say that that's a positive. I think since 1964, that's probably changed. So as a whole, perhaps the trend is bad. You know, we keep offering assistance and we keep having to offer more. But I do think we've reached some populations over the years that weren't being reached.
And they weren't being reached. And I think, I know I've brought it up at different times. There were policies and practices that were put in places in neighborhoods that homeownership was not an opportunity, it was not available. And then, or, you know, through policy regulation, through personal development, through, historically, in the 50s, in the 60s. And so now we're seeing just a generational, in some cases, issue of the areas that we're talking about with the most underserved as far as the housing stock or the development of housing. And so it takes more to get up to par, up to speed. So we have to put an intentional focus on some things that were historically a part of how we got to this place also.
So I think that gets back to maybe what you were talking about, about being intentional about populations of need.
Yes, and also, when, also, you were talking about homeownership. When you transition out of the need, when you don't, you're not a population we need to serve anymore, that doesn't necessarily mean homeownership, I don't think. I think it means just you're out on your own, you're fine, you're working. If you want to rent, you rent, if you want to buy a house, you buy a house. But you're, you're out of the pool of people who need assistance. And I think what we talk about is focusing on that population that can transition out and make sure they, because the waiting list for the, what is it, for the home, the homeownership education.
Oh, Denise's, yeah.
The idea that that waiting list is so big that if you put it out there that you want to help people transition out, I think a lot of people do. And that means different things for every person. I just want, it doesn't necessarily mean you have to go buy a house tomorrow. I think it means all kinds of things, but to transition out, to focus on that group.
So I don't want to, I think this is great, I don't want to cut off your group, but I want to get around to other folks as well. So how about the group that was sitting over here, Randy and Sterling?
Oh, no, that was Randy and Sterling.
So in response to question one, we said, you know, what does a draft vision statement mean to you in practice? We said that the city will affirmatively take steps to address affordable housing issues after rigorous analysis and community dialogue. Does that sound right?
So thinking about not just making policy in this room, right? So thinking about getting out into the, into the community and understanding what those needs are. And then, well, I think what you're saying is, in fact, it is probably the city's role to do this work, right? Because I think that could be-
I think, I think we- We certainly agreed that there need to be a lot of partners in the effort. That the city alone doesn't bear the responsibility, but-
So those partnerships are really important.
For, I think, I don't, I don't know that we had any sort of specific comments on number two.
We said it was generic enough.
It was generic enough. That's right, that's right, that's right. So, yeah, it was very pleasant. So for number three, we tried to sort of outline some, some actual tangible things, like perhaps reinvigorating the loan fund that used to exist. The community loan fund, fewer properties on the vacant house list. Increasing the percentage of, so there's that 37% of, I'm sorry, Dawn, help me out, the rehabilitation program.
The 37% under $150,000.
Yeah, 37% under $150,000 in those neighborhoods, increasing that percentage.
Right.
Spreading out the, yeah, yeah, the benefits of that, of that program in neighborhoods where it could really do some, do some good.
Did you call Spotlight the new name?
Vr.
Vr.
Everybody got it, yes!
I have no idea what that is.
Vacant housing revitalization and rehabilitation.
That's awesome.
And we wanted to reduce that.
Yes. Did, 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 anything else?
Reduce the number of properties on the Vr. list.
Are there any other items for number three? Gentlemen that-
So let me ask you about this, to just make sure we're summing up. So I think what you're saying is reinvigorating the community loan fund, which may be taking a look at all the programs that are already existing and making sure we're using them as well as we can. Is that right? That program or whatever program is?
If it's a value add.
Yeah. And then making sure that we are targeting opportunities, specifically the places where we think they're most effective. Is that the 30?
Would you restate that because I'm missing, I don't see-
I don't think that that's what that is, no. We're saying increasing the percentage of investment in neighborhoods where the average, what, home price is under $150,000. Yes.
Okay, increase the-
Increase the participation, right? Because right now, it's 37% in, in lower income neighborhoods. And see that, see more lower income neighborhoods take advantage of this valuable-
That's a weird thought.
Yeah, so I think it's, I think it's important to say just that's one tool, right, of that. So making sure that we are targeting where we can the programs where they're going to be most effective. Is that right?
Reduce the Vr. properties.
Reduce the Vr. properties. I'm sorry. Yeah, so if we, if we make sure we are investing, increasing the investment in areas that are most likely to be effective for like the $150,000. We'll think about the right way to say that.
And then in the, for question four, in 20 years, what do you hope will have happened to make this a reality? We talked about increase in wraparound services. We talked about increase in wraparound services for, for, for folks who are challenged with, with affordable housing, housing affordability. Even the direct development of more housing units, which has been proposed, you know, on Florida Avenue. Were there other, other ones that you all wanted to include in that list?
Increase turnover in the, in the housing, I hate to use the word project, the housing programs that...
So, the residents.
Residents.
Yeah, so it sounds like, so it sounds like what the mayor was saying about the continuum, right? So, getting, helping people move along.
And the other was to increase homeownership. And, and make those educational programs like Lynn Cag has, bring those out into those developments and educate folks.
Expanding the education.
Exactly.
So, you're helping people build the tools, right, to, where appropriate, right? I mean, if that's possible for some folks, right? Are we good on...
For us, I think we're good.
Excellent, good job.
Thanks, H.
All right, and then the group's in the fishbowl.
All right. It worked out pretty well. We, we had a, we had a very good group. So, what does the draft vision statement mean to us in practice? We really picked out the word vibrant neighborhoods. It really kind of hit a highlight. And you know, real, and then we just kind of paraphrased it. What does it mean to us? It's quality housing that people, residents can afford. So, when we moved into the second one, though, how does this reflect for your vision for housing policy in Lynchburg? We ended up kind of rewriting the draft vision statement. We simplified it, and we, we decided that the, the last part of it, the, talk about policy partnerships to leverage funding, that was all technical. But what we're really trying to do, we basically put a period at the end of advancement. The city, and then we inserted the word sustainable. So, the city of Lynchburg envisions a place where all residents can have access to a stable, decent, affordable homes in vibrant, sustainable neighborhoods that support independent community and advancement, period. And we...
Opportunity.
Oops. Oh, yeah, I misread that, but yes. That, it was basically ending it there and adding sustainable. And we thought that was more succinct, and maybe something that people could better relate to. We also thought that the partnerships and leveraging was important, but again, that's operational. Okay, what does, what does success in the vision look like on the ground? I want to, the, what I'm reading is really all, that, all of Mrs. Spencer's ideas. She really took center stage on that. And you didn't, when we, she wasn't here yet when we introduced ourselves around the table, and I'll just, well, reiterate how much of a valuable member of the Housing Authority, Mrs. Spencer is. All right, so, so this is, she, she pointed out very succinctly that, that success would be residents have the ability to meet their monthly expenses and to work towards a homeownership goal, if they had one. So, they could choose, like Ms. Block just said, they could choose to stay in a rental program, or, or they'd like, but it, to basically open up the door to opportunity there. How do we measure that? So, that's how, do we measure that on median household income? Do we measure it as opposed to, and, and I, I don't think we have an answer to that right now, but I guess that could be a question to the collaborative, because I thought that was a pretty succinct definition of success. And then something else Mrs. Spencer said, that really, it put a fine point on the homeownership discussion that, that Mr. Hagelson brought up earlier. Mrs. Spencer said that her mother told her, when she was, daughter, growing up, it, quote, "It's not where you live, but how you live that makes a difference." And I added, "that makes a difference," but that's, I, I think that was the really meaningful statement. If you have pride in your home, you're comfortable where you, where, where you are. Mr. Fernandez brought that up. He said that in Virginia, people have a, more of a sense of homeownership than, and pride about homeownership than you said, where you grew up in Delaware, right? It's just a different feel that he was, he thought was really evident. But I think Mrs. Spencer really encapsulated that. If somebody, you know, they, they just have pride in the resident, and you see that, I'm sorry, I'm speaking too much now, but you see it as a member of, a former member of the community code compliance team. You'd walk through neighborhoods, and you'd see certain streets in the middle of a neighborhood that may have some challenges, and certain streets, three or four houses that were immaculately kept and wonderful. And it was somebody who really cared for their neighborhood, and, and I think that's a perfect example of that. Oh, and last, last comment. I think that we, we have agreed that we have been doing well, doing, doing a lot of things. The city and the Housing Authority have been working well together, and have been, put a lot of things, or plans, or programs into motion, and we are on a path to success, but we have not achieved success. I think that's, was what we decided. Would anybody from the group care to add to any of that, please?
It's rather remarkable, when you consider we haven't met in 20 years.
I'm not in that group, but just thinking about what we're talking about, getting people on a different path, I think when we look at what's going on across the country, I just wanted, on this point, to say that here in the city, because we have the opportunity of students who are graduating to go into college programs or training programs without debt, that I think it's an opportunity to introduce to the graduates how to, how to, I don't know, but how to own homes, you know? If they come out, they go to community college through, you know, our Beacon Program and others, that, that, what they would have had was debt, can now be turned into generational value for, you know? So, I don't know where we make that connection, but when we talk about families and intergenerational and that kind of thing, I think it has to be tied back to how people view their incomes and the opportunity they have from that, at an earlier age.
Sure. So, I think I'm hearing a, at least one consistent theme throughout all of the comments. I think there's a lot of really good comments here. Definitely, I think, hearing a consistent theme about thinking about that continuum of, of that person who is making their way through, through that system, right? Whether it be some, thinking about the, you know, the debt somebody might have for career tech, but it also might be somebody, getting somebody to the point where they're, you know, stable for a variety of reasons. There might need to be wraparound services, as Mr. Wright mentioned. And then thinking about how people get from the point of housing instability to the point where they are appropriately housed in a stable way, whether that be homeownership or, or a renting situation, right? So, and I think, we think, we certainly, you know, those of us who are, have, are, or have been homeowners, and certainly agree that it's great to build that equity, but again, it's, may not be appropriate for everyone in every case. So, does that sound right? Does that sound like a consistent theme?
With them, again, you've got to look at the big picture of the city and the city council, especially with setting tax rates, is the saddest thing that happens is when I see and visit citizens in Lynchburg that have bought a house, they've lived in this house for 20 and 30 years, but now their taxes are more than what they paid for the house. And so with that, that is something that can be very harmful to somebody who's living on a fixed income. And, and so again, it's got to be the big picture of it. We can't just, you know, make somebody so house poor because they got to pay such high taxes just to stay there, you know? Because years ago, when they're in, when they had the income, but now it's a fixed income, they have problems of maintaining and whatnot, and, you know, that's, that's, that's very sad when you see somebody that has had this pride for 30, 40 years, and then now the taxes are so high, and all these extra fix-ups, and it's not just taxes, but it's all the fix-ups as well. But, let's not add insult to injury as best as we can.
So, I think that really speaks to what, what we, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Mary Jane, but I think that really speaks to what we've been talking about. It's not, it's not just that you are finishing up your relationship with somebody as soon as they get out, out of the sort of system, so to speak, right? It's thinking about those, the long-term ability to stay housed and housed in a sustainable and secure way. Mary Jane, sorry.
I think you started answering, but I just wonder, have we, have we looked at any of the national research that's been done on, on people that, the younger people today, who are really not interested in homeownership? I know we're focusing a lot on both rental and homeownership, but are we factoring that into our equation when we're talking about this, or looked at this?
Yeah, so that, that wasn't a part of our, our white paper or anything like that. That certainly is, I think that certainly is an issue. You know, I mean, I mean, I'm happy to say I'm, I'm, I'm a former homeowner. I used to own a home, and that, right now, I happen to be renting, right? And it's, that's the appropriate thing for me right now. And hopefully, we'll be moving.
Which kind of piggybacks back on my conversation about the debt they leave with out of school and that sort of thing, you know? Anyway, they're not focused on it.
I think that point's really, really important, because millennials are the, Gen Z'ers are the first and one in generations to, the projection is that they will do less well economically than the previous generation. So, I think it's really important that their concerns are also taken into account.
So, I think it, sort of, that sort of leads to another theme that we, that sort of came up, was thinking about a variety of different types of people that have different, different needs and different desires, right? So, I think, is it, we, you think that's a consistent theme that we've heard? Right? So, so I think there's been some rewriting here that Turner and his group did. Maybe we can add in something about, again, being that continuum of that relationship, and also ensuring that we have a variety of interests for a variety of different people. Are we missing, am I missing any other big themes that we talked about that you heard? So, no?
We haven't really addressed anything about expanding. You talked about the, you know, do we, do we have all the stakeholders that we should have at the table? Oh, okay.
So, I want to kind of get through that. So, we can...
We didn't really do anything with that second half.
We had a couple of good points.
Okay, let's...
Real fast.
Yeah, I know, our group didn't.
Can I share ours?
Please, do.
So, we had private developers, realtors, lending institutions, banks. And then, we were also thinking about employers who might want to invest in workforce housing. Universities, large companies.
I like those examples, like the school, the teacher community.
Mm-hmm, the teacher community, the medical professionals, you know, who are hired temporarily.
We reintroduced that song that was coming by, who's that guy? The big bass singer. I owe my soul to the company store.
Yeah.
Yeah. Turney Ford, thank you.
And one of the things I was saying was the faith community.
Yeah. Right, as, as folks who, to answer question three, what organizations could help your vision? And then maybe the Salvation Army, Parkview Mission Library, other organizations that have a, have a pulse on, on the community.
Any other, any other thoughts on stakeholders?
I guess we'll, we did say that we went, like, for the 20 years, and, and I recognize that lots of discussion has been that there's more need. We've talked about the opposite, not expanding, because there's lots of things that we do in the city that aren't done in the counties, and are we gonna, let's not expand and not have that because there's a waiting list that we just automatically think we got to expand, but do what we can do well, and then hopefully, get more people to transition out. So, in 20 years, we don't have it. We don't, I mean, we don't have the need as much, because, other than, you know, as much as possible, is people have transitioned out.
Well, there are always the possible.
There may be some population, but hopefully, it's not in expanding, it's staying the same or, or somewhat shrinking.
There's a population, and that's what we talked about.
Yeah, so really thinking about what the, what the true and appropriate need in our community is, is that, you know, that, as Mr. White said, that local data helps us make better local decisions?
So, our group, we express some concerns about the size of the committee getting unwieldy. I'd certainly welcome bringing, bringing outside resources in on, on occasion, but I would be hesitant, this is more me thinking, not necessarily the whole group, a little hesitant in growing it with permanent membership to so large that you, you can't get anything done. Additional skill sets, I think, which should be considered are, and we discussed this very briefly, real estate, legal, and finance. That sort of, that's our skill sets. I think legal would be important, because as you're talking about these trusts and so forth, you're talking about land transition, and I think that would be actually pretty key. But just, with the warning, just be careful that it doesn't get wieldy or unmanageable.
There was another piece that we talked about that had to do with reducing the regulatory barriers to getting rid of vacant structures. We talked about, and then, because you, you could take a structure in downtown Lynchburg and, and knock it down, but then you wouldn't be able to build anything on it, because the city's got a certain setback requirement, or a certain side yard requirement, and that sort of thing. You know, sidewalks, that's, reduce those barriers so that we can get those areas improved.
And one thing we talked about was how, when you talk to developers, building apartments, and we always ask, why are you building so many apartments? You've never been to single families. And one thing they always say, the profit margin is not as good for a single house versus an apartment complex. So, just a discussion with developers, just to see what are some of those barriers that what, we do have in our authority, what we can assist them with, so they would be willing to build more single families versus so many apartments.
So, bringing those folks on, into the table to build a better conversation. That makes sense.
We are bringing to City Council on December 10th, a conversation at your work session regarding R1 development and barriers to single family development. So, that's next on tap.
So, here's what I would suggest, here's what I'd suggest for today, since, since we're sort of out of time, and I know...
We act.
Yeah, so here, here's what I would suggest for, since we're sort of out of time for today, and I know we've got to come back at 7:30, maybe we go back and sort of rewrite a vision statement based on the feedback we've gotten today, and then bring it back. Is that all right? Bonnie? Yep, and then we'll, we'll bring it back to you and see what you think. And we'll be moving forward. So, you have closings?
I want to say thank you to everyone coming for your time, and yes, H, for making this possible, and for focusing on improving housing affordability in our city. So, thank you very much.
And if we want to do a roll call with the chairman?
Yes, let me see, because I have, yes. Okay, so, for the council, if you all could indulge us a minute, roll call. Are there any announcements? I will start with Sterling.
It's sad to me to start with my, several council members are a part of that. Again, we're so thankful for such a great role, anyway, we were so grateful for such a strong community we have here in Lynchburg. We're touching about four different nonprofits that help our children in our community. So, we're thankful for, for all the working together to make a difference in our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Jane on her.
All right. Councilmember Wright?
I just want to congratulate the NAACP on a really excellent annual dinner this past, this past weekend. It was really terrific. The secretary, former secretary of Homeland Security spoke, and it was just really, really outstanding.
Thank you. Councilmember Para?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was, I was, I had one or two items, and then they just kind of popped on my head. I will say, though, I am not participating in mustaches for kids this year, but Councilmember Wilder, I'm, yeah, I know, my wife is so much happier with me for not doing that, but Councilmember Wilder, I will pledge $100 to your campaign. I think it's a worthy cause, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not personally supportive, but I will, I will contribute to your cause. And you all can't laugh at my, my lack of mustache this year.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hagelson, I'm sorry.
One thing, just, thank, it was yesterday, it was Veterans Day, and we think back to all those guys that sacrificed for us. I just saw the movie Midway, and, you know, and you look back on this time of just, hard to fathom what they went for, went through. So, just thankful for our freedoms.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
All right, thank you, as usual. I'll take up a couple of minutes. All residents, I have a couple of roll call announcements. All residents of Lynchburg are encouraged to participate in the Census Count set for April 1, 2020. This effort is crucial to having an accurate representation of Lynchburg citizens. Also, of great importance is the availability of jobs through the Census Bureau. Primary open positions will be for census takers, but clerical positions and supervisory positions are also available. So, visit the Census website at 2020census.gov for more information, and to apply for jobs, or contact Assistant City Manager John Hughes. Assistant to the City Manager John Hughes. And tomorrow, November 13th, at 4:00 p.m., will be the unveiling of the first installation of art on the fence. The works of five artists have been chosen to bring beauty to construction fences as the Main Street renewal project continues. So, be one of the first to view this exciting community public art installation, and so we're excited about that. It'll beautify the work that's going on. Beautify the work that's going on downtown, so thank you. And there will be no meeting on November 26th, so I believe we had discussed that. So for the holiday week, we want to remind you of that, and again, thank you, as Jeff said, to the veterans. So thank you very much. And we are recessed until 7:30. Thank you very much.